So I am Delegate Sia Price and I have been representing the 95th District since 2016. My current committees are HWI, excuse me, Health, Welfare and Institutions, which is lovingly called... Hmm, because I shot that. There we go. Am I good? Okay. HWI is Health, Welfare and Institutions and General Laws. So HWI deals with a lot of your medical, like hospitals, behavioral health, welfare, SNAP benefits, some funeral, mortuary science information, and a lot of those institutions that are not quite insurance, but like the actual provider healthcare. And then General Laws is housing, alcohol and beverage control, marijuana, consumer protections, and more recently also gambling. So that's the two committees I serve on. My legislative backgrounds have been really in voting rights, housing justice, economic justice, reproductive healthcare, and also criminal justice reform. I do have bills in other areas, but that's really where I've honed in since 2016. My educational journey is listed. I am a forever student, so there's that. I just graduated in May from Virginia Union University and probably going back soon. And then because delegates make $18,640, I also have a job. And that job is Director of Virginia Block. And we do basically civics education, civic involvement, and voter engagement in a nonprofit capacity. So that's just a little about me. I do want to give everyone a refresher on how a bill becomes a law. And this year it was really interesting because some of the nuances that may not be well-known actually happened this year. So I'm not trying to assume that you don't know, but for some of us it's been a while since we were in a classroom for civics, right? So first, I really want to point out for constituents that a bill starts with an idea. And when you all have a different lived experience than I do, this is an honor, but I represent 83,000 people. That means that there are 83,000 navigations in the world and you might drive on a street that's really dangerous. And I may have never been on that street. And so just even telling me about some of the things that you're going through helps me know. I know a lot about, you know, the district, but it helps me know some of the things that you're going through. And so it's really important that you speak up. You can share your stories if you have like medical history or something that you've been through. If you've unfortunately lost a loved one, like those stories that kind of put a face or a story to a policy. That's really helpful. And then I really see this as a collaborative relationship. And I'll give you a couple of examples in how my lived experience might be different than yours, but legislation can come from that. So I don't have any children, but I hear that before Friday, for every child support payment that an employer takes out of your check, there's a $5 fee. And if you have two kids, that can add up over the course of your, you know, bi-weekly checks. But the law basically said if you're gonna charge, you charge $5. So we got that tweak to say up to $5. And so now if your employer doesn't want to charge or wants to charge a dollar, that's possible. It may not sound like a lot, but to the gentleman that came to me, it does mean a lot because that's more finances that can go towards the kids. I may not have never known that, you know, without having heard that. Unfortunately, you've also heard in the news that an apartment complex in Newport News was condemned. And the city of Newport News, shout out to the Coast Compliance Department, the Fire Department, the City Manager, they did everything they could within what the law would allow. But House Bill 802, hearing from the people that had slum lords, would have allowed for us to fight them in a different way and give the city more power. And so that came from hearing stories about tenants that had slum lords. I have a wonderful landlord, so my dad. But yeah, so like I may not have known some of these other things. And then also talking with some students, college students and high school students, there were some trends that were happening that were, in my estimation, pretty shady for the name, image, and likeness contracts, where you're trying to lock in a kid at the beginning of their career to a $10,000 contract, knowing that they're about to be LeBron James if you give them a couple of years, right? So we put some protections around that. But those bills were brought up to us by constituents speaking out, so it's really, really important. But then once we've had the conversation and we come up with the idea for the bill, then here's where it really starts. I will introduce the bill. And the bill gets to bill language because there are lawyers that work in the Department of Legislative Services that help my non-lawyer self get my idea into lawyer words, right, to the code. Because there's a very specific way that the Virginia Code reads. They come up with a title and the summary. And that process of starting to drop bills starts as early as July. So even though we won't be discussing these bills until January, we can start introducing them now. So it's not too soon to speak with me and meet with me about your ideas for bills. Then after I've introduced the bill, one of the things, sorry, I need to change that font. But one of the things that is really important to understand about position and the power that a position carries. Just because I introduce a bill does not mean that it's gonna go to a friendly committee, that it's gonna be on the docket on the day that I want it, or that it will even have a hearing at all. The party that is in, in the majority for that House, the Speaker decides which committee it goes to. If it goes to a committee, the Chair decides when it's heard. And then also, like I said, not all bills are guaranteed a hearing. So then after it's been given a committee, that's when the members get to respond. Of course, in step one, I started in the House because that's where I'm in. But for the House, the point where you all can engage the most is in our subcommittees. So there are 14 standing committees. Within that, they're broken down into smaller groups. So then about seven of us get to really dive into the bill as opposed to 100 of us discussing it, you know, from the beginning. So if a bill passes out of subcommittee, then it goes to the committee. Sometimes the committees don't really offer a lot of public testimony because they assume that that happened in subcommittee. So you really want to engage on the subcommittee level and we'll talk about that. But then once it passes out of committee, then that's when it goes to the next step for the House, and that's the House floor. So during session, January through March, we usually meet, the House meets 12 noon, Monday through Friday. That's when all 100 delegates are in the chamber, we're sitting at our seats, and we can vote yes, no, or R69, which means that there is a conflict of interest. And for most bills, all you need is a majority, but some of them you might need two-thirds and we'll talk about a few of those. And then if you ever hear me talking about a bill that's on first reading, second reading, or third reading, those are the steps that the bill goes through before we take our final vote. After they've come out of subcommittee and committee, second reading means the 100 of us get to debate and also add amendments. So let's say we had a bill and you're like, I really want to vote for this, but if you just tweak this one thing, you can get 10 more yes votes. I'm probably gonna tweak that one thing if it's a compromise that you and I can agree on and that I don't lose my other votes. And so that's something that can happen on second reading. Then typically the next business day, it's on third reading and then that's when we actually vote. When you see the red and the green, wise or no's and the vote count of, you know, like 51. So that's when that happens on third reading. And I'm going through this because when I talk about some of the other things, it'll probably make a little bit of sense. So then once it passes from the House, in this particular instance, it will then go to the Senate. Things are a little bit different in the Senate, if I may say so myself, but there are fewer of them. There are only 40 senators. And so a lot of them don't have subcommittees. They actually just go straight to committee. So that means that you have to know when the committees are meeting because that's your chance to engage. Even if you talk to me or the House members about a bill, you still have to follow the bill all the way through. And it's important to talk to them as well because you don't want to leave them out of the conversation. And then, so then as it comes out of committee, it goes to the Senate floor. Now the House, you might hear four or five people speak, but the last two speakers, you know, we kind of had a specific time schedule that we were keeping on, so we weren't debating, you know, bills for hours and hours. The Senate's a little bit different. If all 40 members have 40 opinions, you might hear all 40 opinions on one bill. So you have to be a little bit more patient with them because it might take a little bit longer. But also for them, it takes a majority to pass votes as well. And so then after it passes out of the Senate, then typically it goes to the governor. And any governor has four decisions. They can sign the bill, send an amendment back to the General Assembly, veto or kill the bill, or take no action. This is really important because we're gonna talk about some bills that kind of went through some of these machinations. But for an amendment, in April, all 140 members go back to Richmond to respond to the governor's vetoes. It's either called reconvene session or veto session. An amendment sent down by the governor has to pass both houses with a simple majority. So if the governor wants to change a bill, we have to agree to it in both houses. Sometimes amendments can be actually soft vetoes. So there's this thing called the reenactment clause. And it basically says, your bill is cute, but you gotta pass this another time in order for it to go into effect. What does that do? It kills the bill, but you did it in a nicer way than a veto, but it's still killing the bill. And then sometimes, you know, in my time since 2016, most of the amendments don't drastically change the bill. But this year we saw some attempts that actually use the intent of the original bill against the bill itself. And if you have any questions about that, we can definitely go into it. And then for vetoes, like I said, vetoes are trying to kill the bill. In order to stop the bill from dying, both chambers have to override the veto by two-thirds. And you know that Virginia's majorities are very slim. And so it's very rare that you'll see a veto be overturned. The governor issues justification statements, so you can kind of see their policy beliefs or philosophy in why they killed the bill in the justification statements. And then when we come back, so what happened? There were some bills, well, mine, that was passed out of the House and the Senate unanimously. That means nobody voted no, but it's still got a veto. So you would think, well, if they supported the bill before the veto, surely they would vote for the bill when it came back. But that's when you kind of learn that there's party loyalty and then there's party, you know, policy decisions. And we saw a lot of that. And you see that on both sides whenever, you know, anybody's in charge. But we definitely saw that where you just voted for the bill, but now you also voted to, you know, sustain the veto. So that was interesting. And then if the governor signs the bill or there's no action taken, then it is enacted at the date listed. So sometimes there's an emergency clause, like when we need to conform taxes to the federal policy, like we needed to do that now. So that had an emergency clause, which means it was sooner than July 1st. If there's no date listed, then those bills go into effect on Friday. And then there might be some like great idea, but the agency that handles it needs a little bit more time in order to get like the implementation system together. So it might be a January of the next year start. That's a delayed enactment clause. And so those are the options for when a bill will become a law. Now, this year, we really saw the nuance of the bill has to pass out of the House and the Senate in identical ways. So if it passes out of the House and there's a comma difference in the Senate, that means it's not identical. So what happens then? It goes into a conference committee. And so this is where it gets a little frustrating, I would imagine, because those are private negotiations. It doesn't go back to a committee. You guys don't get to speak up unless you're just sending emails because you've been following it. And it's not transparent at all, i.e. the budget process. You guys and we guys found out what was in the conference report or the compromise budget at the same time. There was a Washington Post article that was given an exclusive from the budget negotiators that we literally were reading the article at the same time. That's how I found out what I was gonna be voting on and in 48 hours I was taking a vote. It is completely not transparent. And then you just kind of have to weigh, did the compromise make things better, worse? Is it something I can support or not support? And that's what we have to deal with. So that is what is happening right now because we didn't finish all of our bills, because the conference reports were dragging on and on, because a lot of them were tied to the budget. So June 1st, we went back and we voted on a lot of things, including some of the conference reports. So once we pass those, those go to the governor. But our work is not done and we will actually be going back and I'll talk to you about that a little bit more. But we are currently in special session. So a way to track the process, this is my favorite website, lis.virginia.gov. This is kind of what it looks like. You can look up everything from it. And if you ever need help going through that website, we can help you. But I also just want you to know, like, this is real life. Like we show up, this was us taking our oath this year. Because of course, after an election, it's new people sometimes. So we had a two-year term with a new oath. This is what it looks like if you're watching House Committee videos. And this is one of the bills that I was presenting. And then also, if you're fortunate enough to get a bill through and you have the governor sign it, this was the signing for the Voting Rights Act of Virginia that Senator McClellan and I worked on under the previous administration. So that is how a bill becomes a law. I want to pause to see if there are any questions, either online or in the room. And then we can get into some real examples of what the bills were this year. Cool. Please know this is also a no judgment zone. No question is stupid because I know that if I went to your job, I would have lots of questions. So please feel free to answer, to ask all of the questions. So let's dive in. So for the legislative session, it is when the 100 delegates and the 40 senators go to the Capitol starting in the first, second, first, Wednesday, second Wednesday of January. And we are there Monday through Friday until the end. And short year, short session years, it's 45 days. Long session is 60 days. And that's calendar days, so the weekends count in those days. So we are there. We have subcommittee meetings that might start at 7:30. We have subcommittee meetings that might end at 7:30 PM. So it's long days, but it's really like everything is televised, so you guys can watch it. So it's really cool. And that is where the legislative branch gets together to make laws, to levy taxes, and to elect judges. That's what we do. And so that's when we do it. We do not write laws outside of a regular session or special session. So if we were not in special session and I actually had a summer, we would not be writing laws. So say for instance, you brought me an issue. I would say, great, let's work on that in January. I'm not putting you off. I literally just can't work on it again until January. And then just making sure, again, the website to help keep track of things. And then I created a Bitly. If you go to either of those, you get this calendar and you can just start clicking on days. And you can see floor session, subcommittee meetings, committee meetings. We're just like, how did that bill die? Well, you can see. You can see what the conversation was, who supported it, who opposed it, who voted for it, advocates that came to speak for it, why you should have been in the room, all of those things. But we'll talk about that as well. And then now, some of the bills. These legislative updates are just some of the things, like I said, that I've been working on. But in that other category, I'm gonna ask you if you have any topics that you want to know more about. And I have a couple of things I can refer to. So even if you say like neuroscience, I might be able to find something for you. But be thinking about a topic that you might want to know more information about. So as it pertains to economic empowerment, let's start with the all-familiar gas tax and why I voted no. So let me show you this first. $41 billion in profits for what? Not last year, no, 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 the first quarter of this year. That is what the oil execs are bringing in while you are hurting at the pump. However, with the gas tax, the red would go to them. Your tax dollars going to make $41 billion plus. And then the out-of-state drivers from, let's say, DC, Maryland, North Carolina, they would get that yellow portion. And then some of you, if you have a car, but only up to your, you know, whatever the 26 cents is. This is me dividing the 26 cents. So basically, the green amounts to some relief, maybe up to $11 a month. But then what you lose is funding for snow removal, fixing potholes, safe roads, better transit. Like we're trying to get rapid transit in Newport News. You're not gonna do that if you're gutting transportation funding. And so that is why I voted no on the gas tax. And why I don't care who's talking about a gas tax of either party, why I think it's a bad idea. Oil companies are already rich enough and you work too hard to be getting somebody their second plane, right? So what we did support was tax rebates. So for most individuals, there are some stipulations, around September, late September, you'll be getting about $250. And that's just, I mean, I know it's not everything, but just to ease the burden a little bit. And then for couples that file jointly, they would get 500. But again, this is some, not all Virginians, but that's coming your way. Now, for those that are left behind by that one, because their earnings are a little bit lower, they actually pay a higher percentage in taxes. And this is our upside-down tax code in Virginia. This top 1%, probably those people that I just talked about owning those planes, they pay 7.1% of their income in taxes. And if you come down to the lowest 20%, they pay 9.9% in taxes. Exactly. Thank you. The question was, does this include all of the taxes? And yes, the answer is any state and local tax. A lot of people will just tell you about the income taxes or property taxes. But if you have low income and don't own property, but you go to the store to buy groceries or you go to the store, wherever, to buy whatever, you're paying taxes. So yes, this looks at all of the taxes. And when you add all of that up, we're upside down, meaning that the people that make the least actually pay more out of their income. So a bill that I carried called the Earned Income Tax Credit is actually where folks in those bottom 20% will have more of their refund come home. So let me say this. Let's say a person was eligible for a federal earned income tax credit of $1,000, but they only had tax liability for 400, they get the 400. Virginia got that 600. Now, up to 15%, not the total thing, up to 15% more of that would come back to the family. So I think one of the biggest things that I want to point out, the shift that just this bill being funded in the budget does. A single person with two kids making about $22,000, up till tomorrow, their earned income tax credit would have been 431. But now, after this has been funded in the budget, you add the yellow line. It didn't go up by $4, no ma'am. It went to $866 that they'll be getting home. And so this is really, really important for the people that, I mean, would you rather have the 866 or would you rather have that 250, right? So for the other folks that were left behind by some of the other tax proposals, we were able to fund that. And we were only one of five states that didn't do it. So now we're one of the other states that aren't. As you remember previously, in May of 2021, our increase in the minimum wage went from $7.25 an hour to $9.50 an hour. We were able to protect our progress and we will see another increase again in January 2023 to $12 an hour. However, when people are talking about getting to that $15 an hour, the bill that was passed before requires the bill to be passed again, that reenactment clause, where it's like, oh yeah, it's cute, but you gotta go through this whole thing again. We actually have to go through that whole thing again. So when you are being asked by me or anyone else to support us and to vote, ask me, do you support a raise in minimum wage? I will say yes. Let's get to that 15, but it has to go back through the General Assembly one more time to get us there. But I do want to point out, this could be, this, these are the raises in our, in our minimum wage for Virginia. But if I were to add the line for inflation, it's just not keeping up at all. And so when you have rents that are doubling, but you have incomes that are not, that's how we get to some of the other bills that I'll be talking about for housing justice. But that's economic policies. So let's scooch over to gun violence prevention. So in 2020, I carried a bill that helped fund six localities, $25,000 to do an assessment. You'll get an extra prize if you raise your hand. Did anyone here fill out Newport News' Gun Violence Prevention Assessment? Okay. No judgment. If you did not see it, I want you to go home tonight and sign up for the Newport News Now because that is the newsletter that comes from the city of Newport News. Y'all may not even live in Newport, but Hampton has one too. But basically, it was asking residents for what they thought about certain things as we're trying to get a comprehensive plan to prevent gun violence. So we got that funding. Then we also got, I fought really hard for this, but we got $5.8 million coming into the state from ARPA funding for gun violence prevention. And of that, I believe Newport News got $800,000 and Hampton might have gotten $800,000 too. Now, we have plans for even more, but that was just off ARPA funding solely. And then Senator McClellan and I had proposed $27 million for the Center for Firearms Violence Intervention and Prevention. And that was fully funded in Governor Northam's introduced budget. But it was a line in the sand for my colleagues across the aisle that that had to come out of the budget before they would even sit down to negotiate the budget. So we did not get it. But what we did get was $5 million for enforcement strategies, which means we bypassed prevention and intervention and went straight to enforcement. And $6.5 million for gun violence prevention, of which, $1 million goes to Norfolk, $500,000 goes to Portsmouth. So that's $4 million for the rest of the whole state. Let me tell you this. I have a program that I've seen happen in a different state where one block, one block took $1 million. And that was one city. So if I were to tell Newport News, you could get $4 million, we could really, really, really make a difference. But that is $4 million for the entire state. And people might be like, well, you know, I get it, but you gotta celebrate the wins. Guess why? Because this is a historic amount put towards gun violence prevention, but it's still not enough. So remember when I told you all those subcommittee meetings were really important for people to speak up? If you live in an area like Newport News or Hampton, Hampton Roads, wherever, we know that too many lives are ending too soon, way too soon, and one life is too many. So I need people to come and speak up and say, no, this is what we need because we want to save lives. And so that's gun violence prevention. Education, so we got not as much as we wanted, but we fought like hell for teachers raises. So teachers will get $1,000 bonus in December, a $5,000 raise in the fiscal year that starts on Friday. Yes. Yes, I'm sorry, December of 2022. So this first fiscal year starts on Friday. So fiscal years go from July to June. So the first year of the biennium or the two years of the budget starts Friday. So that first year, teachers get a 5% raise. Then that's the amount that they get for that year. Then the next year, teachers get a 5% raise on top of that. So I'm also hearing and I'm listening, some teachers say, that's great. However, if the cost of insurance is also rising at 5%, you've nullified that. And that's why we're pushing for more and why we should also make that a huge priority. We also got better funded access to school meals. Shout out to Delegate Danica Rome, who's been working on this. They call her the lunch lady. But she's really been fighting hard for every single child that wants a meal to be able to have it because we know hungry kids can't learn, they can't function, and their health outcomes are worse. We also got $109 million to increase support staff positions, which means there's fewer students per one adult for those, you know, support staff positions. And then we also passed a bill that directs the Department of Education to help disseminate information, to help seniors make plans for post-graduation. Okay, housing justice. So when I talked about the slum lords, that House Bill 802, what really, 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 really hurts is this. If you've ever watched a conversation about housing bills, they're usually the realtors and homeowners versus, or landlords versus the renters. And for the whole time I've been there, it's been versus, 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 as opposed to a symbiotic relationship where you get to make money and have a great place to give people to stay and they get to stay and then kumbaya. That's usually not how the conversations have happened. House Bill 802 got us in that unicorn phase of everybody was cool. We had 40 organizations that... We had 40 organizations that supported it. Again, this would have allowed for localities to fight back harder against slum lords. Right now, a locality can issue a fine, the fines are usually lower than the cost of the fixes, or they can condemn the property. This would have allowed them for the health and safety standards to actually sue for the fixes, what needs to be fixed. And so you could be held in criminal contempt for not having your, you know, place up to code. So when you think about the apartment complex that we're dealing with in Newport News that hit the news today, if this bill had been passed and signed by the governor, it could be helping hundreds of people on Friday. It passed out of the House, it passed out of the Senate, and the governor vetoed it. And the justification statement for why he vetoed it was contradictory and false. And this is why people have to pay attention. I just can't even put into words that aren't curse words, what that feels like to know when people's, they're calling me. Like, what am I supposed to do? They have to pack up their stuff and be out by Friday. You actually do probably cry a little bit, but you know that you're gonna come back and fight like hell and have those hundred something people in that apartment complex, because it happened in Henrico too, about 200 people, have 300 people make some phone calls. Because if you don't want to listen to me, or if you want to play, you know, petty party games, I have somewhere to say, you didn't hurt me, you hurt the people that you took an oath to serve. And you can tell them I said it because I already told them. There you go. You never give up. Some things that we got put into place in 2020 and 2021 took 10 years to fight for. And if you don't continue doing the work when the pendulum swings back, you won't be ready. So, what they say, stay ready so you don't have to get ready, we will. Now, this is another heartbreaker for me. When they predicted what the pandemic would do for an already bad eviction problem, we got to work. Three of the bills that I carried made some very intentional policy decisions. Right now, your rent might be due on July 1st, right? Well, June 1st, let's go back, on June 1st, you had 14 days to pay. And that extra time might give you time to get your next check, to get, you know, cousin that borrowed money to get them to pay it back, whatever. Because we know sometimes it's rubbing nickels together. That 14 days was huge and it was being proven that it helped prevent evictions. We also had rent and mortgage relief. We also had a right of redemption, which gave you up until two days before an eviction is scheduled to pay everything, including fees. So the landlord is made whole, you get to stay. And then we also had payment plans. So one of the things about the rent and mortgage relief, landlords had to say, yes, this, this rent relief is available and they had to apply for that before they did the eviction. All of that goes away tomorrow. July 1st, everything reverts back to pre-pandemic, even though we are still in the pandemic. My House Bill 803 would have taken that five days payer quit that went to 14 for the pandemic and made it permanent. And that bill died. So if anybody is like, oh, I got 14 days to pay rent starting Friday, no, they do not. So what they have predicted is that we will see up to three times more evictions start in July than we've seen since the pandemic started. And that was a bill that was killed in subcommittee, even though the data shows it's helping prevent evictions. And then you also with housing have application fees. I don't know who's looked for a place recently, but we heard reports back that people were spending up to a month's rent in application fees just trying to find a home. If you only have your first and last month's rent and you don't have the extra hundreds of dollars for application fees, you might not, like, it's an obstacle to affordable housing. So we started off with this bill, House Bill 804, that was super innovative and it was probably a little too new for some people. So I got the stakeholders around the table and they said, listen, can we get you down to a disclosure bill? So picture a website saying, hey, don't pay the application fee, call me first. Because you might want to know, if 14 people are already waiting for this unit, you were never gonna get that. That's $45 down the drain and 30, I think the range around here is 32 to 50. So, so let me help you save your money, call me and let's talk before you pay it, right? That's all the website was gonna be, have to say. That bill passed out of committee 22 to 0. Remember when I told you all that it gets to first reading, second reading, third reading? Got to third reading, the day we were supposed to vote on it, they kicked it back to committee. Why does that matter? It was the last day that the House could deal with House bills before crossover. So that means that there were no more committee meetings, the bill dies. So that's why it's really important to know those readings, to know those dates. So that's why I go over this stuff so that you can help, you know, follow the bills. You'll have to ask the people that voted to send it back to committee. It was a party line vote. It was a party line vote to send the bill back to committee. I was told that it wasn't anything personal. But I'm also like, I would have rathered it have been personal because now you just voted against good policy and that's really dumb. But nobody really asked, sorry. So voting rights, I want to report that all of the progress that we made in 2020 and 2021 in order to get Virginia to be the 12th easiest state to vote in, up from the 38th state, that all of that progress was protected, including the Voting Rights Act that we passed in 2021 that makes discrimination in the enterprise of voting illegal. And as if you are, as you're watching the January 6 trials and hearings and seeing the amount of effort, coordinated effort that was put into turning, turning around the, just, no more curse words, yes. The dangerous position that was being put in. I really do hope that wherever you are on the spectrum, you at least come away from watching that, knowing that democracy is not something we can take for granted. Democracy is something that we must work to protect every day. And so that's what we were able to do. Thank you to the Senate Democrats that were able to stave off some of that. So we have 45 days of early voting. They tried to take it back to seven days. We have 45 days of early voting. Election Day is still a state holiday. You can still fix your absentee ballot if something is wrong with it. If you're sitting in your absentee ballot just so it's postmarked by Election Day and gets in by 12 noon that Friday. All of those things that made us have record-breaking turnout on both sides of the aisle in 2021, all of those are still in place. And so here, I will pause and see what are some of the other issues that may have brought you here tonight that you might want to hear updates in. So, so healthcare is an interesting one because we did have some bills that showed a difference in philosophies on what causes a pandemic, if COVID is real, if ivermectin is a good thing or not. So we had those conversations. So, so when y'all see crazy things on the news in other states, please know that's happening in Virginia as well. But what we were able to do was learn from some of the things that providers have gone through in the healthcare field. I.e., telemedicine is amazing, whether we're in a pandemic or not. I'm not sure if you all have ever had a telemedicine visit, but it's just, I'm in my pajamas and I'm seeing the doctor, this is amazing. So it's really, really a great tool for, for ease and comfort. But then also for people that don't have that type of provider within miles and miles and miles for out west, they now can do telemedicine. And so we built that out and have insurance mandates, protect privacy protection and different things to make telemedicine more available. One of the things I'm really disappointed about was one of the bills that was carried by Delegate Naderius Clark from Portsmouth. And that would have made it so after seven years, any medical debt just leaves your credit report, right? And I don't know about you, I had back surgery, dude, like, the insurance company covered about $14,000 worth of stuff and said, you know what, actually pre-existing condition, we're taking all of that money back. It is through the grace of God that I didn't end up in court, like, a lot of people were having to go through bankruptcy or having dings on their credit report, simply by going through things that the doctor said you should do to stay alive. And, and medical debt is just, not only is the cost of healthcare too high, the cost of prescriptions, but then to think that you might be able to lose your house because you were paying for your prescriptions. So medical debt is definitely near and dear to people's hearts, but that's why we just don't understand why that bill was vetoed. And another, you know, another point where people have to speak out more because I think that is a bipartisan issue of bringing down costs and increasing access to life-saving care and medication. Another thing I know, For medical debt. Exactly what you just said. And it passed out of the House, passed out of the Senate, and then was vetoed. So then, up under healthcare, I'm gonna listen to it very broadly. Mental health. We got a lot of funding for mental health services for students within the school. But also our mental health system, before the shift in leadership, I was on the Behavioral Health Commission. And the system just needed an overhaul. Hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars have been invested for us to go on this journey with the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, for them to increase access and make it the system better, not just small little Band-Aids. So that was encouraging. But also, just because whenever I talk about mental health, I want to say this. If you have access and benefits to go see a therapist, please go. This is a lot that people are going through on a daily basis and I just want to help break the stigma. So many people I know, and myself included, I could not do this without talking to somebody, right? And it's just, I want to break that stigma. If something doesn't feel right, go talk to someone. And if you need help getting connected, call my office. But we are seeing too many lives end too soon because people didn't get the help that they needed. And then also that, like, hands-off friendship that somehow we've gotten to, we're not, we're not even paying attention sometimes to the people that are closest to us. If you see something happening that's like, hold on, girl, something's a little different, can we talk? Do you need to talk? Encourage them to go get the help. We do have resources available. Again, if you need to be connected with any services, let me know. We're also making, I think, some important strides towards insurance coverage for doulas and midwives in order to have better health outcomes for Black women and their maternal health. And the reason why I say specifically Black women and why I will never shy away from adding race to healthcare conversations is because if a disparity exists, then that means that there needs to be additional solutions for the people experiencing the disparity. And Black women are three times more likely to die while pregnant, delivering, or within a year of delivery. And so the recent Commissioner of Health decided that he didn't want to talk about race when it comes to health because it's too divisive. The thing that's divisive within healthcare is having a disparity. So if you don't want to be divisive in the disparity, you may have seen an article in the paper about my thoughts on that. But we are making strides. One thing that the doulas and the midwives are telling me, we definitely have to look at some of the obstacles that are still in place for access in order to get them registered license and then be able to get insurance payments. But the work that they do along with our obstetricians and gynecologists really can have great outcomes. What else within healthcare? Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah. Advanced directives. So just, I just want to recap for those that may not have heard you in the absence of a mic. The question was, did I think that a medical aid and dying bill was going to be heard in the House or passed out of the Senate? And while I hear everything that you're saying, I also know nationally what is happening with bodily autonomy for healthcare in general. So whether it's medical aid and dying, whether it's reproductive healthcare and abortion, whether it's privacy over what you're doing with your body, we are on the wrong trajectory for that. It did not even get a hearing in the House and like you said, it died 7-7 with one abstention in the Senate. And it is because we won't have the discussions about someone having the choices to make about their own life. Even if somebody's uncomfortable with an idea to not give a bill a hearing is a policy choice. And so a lot of people that want to know more or hear more about it, or at least know how I feel or how other members feel, when you don't give a bill a hearing, you don't even get to hear what people, like, it may be, you know, I just don't like this one sentence in the bill, could you get rid of that? We didn't even have that conversation. And so it's unfortunate that some bills don't get a hearing, but it's also the people that are in power that get to make those decisions. So I would continue to give us a call, to educate us, to live lived experiences, but also to give the people that make those decisions about when or where or if bills get hearings or which committees they go to, to give them a call with, with those lived experiences as well. So to recap the question, rightfully bringing up the Hobbs decision that overturned Roe v. Wade and also referencing Judge Clarence Thomas's opinion, which also said, hey, everybody bring us your cases about contraception, consensual sex between adults and what kind of sex is okay, what kind of sex is not okay, and then marriage equality. So those were the three cases that were mentioned. And what are we doing in Virginia, or if anything, we're doing in Virginia in order to protect their current rights from those cases? So I do want to say, including abortion. Abortion is legally safely available in Virginia because of the bills that we had passed in 2020 and 2021. And so that's for now. The thing that I want to remind people about that conversation, since we're here, even if you are not interested in an abortion, you need to understand what is involved with the overturning of this case, i.e. privacy. There are some states that are making it such that if a woman has or a pregnant person has a miscarriage, they have to prove that they didn't get an abortion. And so when you think about just the privacy of healthcare decisions, registries that might be made, tracking apps to make sure that you're still having your period, this is not some sci-fi thing that we're talking about. This is, exactly, this is what we're talking about. So this is beyond someone's religious belief about one thing, it is actually way more broad than that. And then they're saying, on top of that, we might take your contraception. Beyond just the disbelief that I have about that, there are some of us that are on contraception for life-saving measures. Those that might have, you know, all sorts of things, but polycystic ovarian syndrome. I would not be able to function in my job but for what my doctor and I have been doing for 16 years, right? And there's these things where it's like, okay, so all of the lives that we're saving, because of contraception, just out the door. So if you're saying we can't have abortion, or you're saying that we shouldn't have contraception, then obviously we have this budget that has all the services that people need from pregnancy through death, right? But that's just not what we're doing. We're not funding the care that it takes for once someone is born. And so it's hypocritical, and that's how you also know that it's about control and not about the babies. If it was about the babies, then I wouldn't have just gotten $4 million for gun violence prevention, I would have gotten the 27. If it was about the babies, we would have more services available, and we wouldn't be holding on to TANF dollars for the rainy day when we have millions of people that are going through rainy days right now. And so for when people say that, you know, and then the whole situation about gay marriage not being looked at, and I can guarantee you, 90% of the people that are just totally against gay marriage have never interacted with a same-sex-loving couple. And this idea that if you hang around gay people, you'll turn gay, but gay people hanging around heterosexual people didn't turn them heterosexual. And I know some of the nicest and most loving parents who are in same-sex relationships. And so it's this fear-mongering based in certain people's religion, because I told you, I graduated from the theological school at VUU, so don't tell me it's all Christians, right? But these ideas and views based in certain religions being made into law, and that's when it's problematic, because what you believe in your house and what I believe in my house are different, the law should not just reflect what you believe. And so it's unconscionable that this would happen. Now, in Virginia, we do have in our state constitution that the definition of a marriage is between one man and one woman. That's the Marshall Newman Amendment that passed back in, I think, like the Bush era. In order to change the constitution, the proposed constitutional change has to pass out of the General Assembly, there has to be an election, and then it has to pass out of the General Assembly again, then it goes to the voters that November for you all to vote on. In order to take that out of the constitution, it passed in 2021, it failed in 2022, so it will not come to you in November, and that process has to start all over again. So that is what is so dangerous, because now something that was outdated, that is currently federally unconstitutional, might become federally constitutional because if that case is overturned. So I think that we need to have more grassroots, family, one-on-one conversations to really educate ourselves to what some of these decisions were. The other thing is that I would encourage any people that were celebrating this decision or the invitation for these other three cases to educate themselves to the unintended consequences that would impact their own life. And also, for those that are not even of childbearing age and not interested in same-sex relationships, maybe also don't get so distracted on the hate-mongering and look at all of this other policy and pay attention to all of these other things. But right now, I think that the hatred has gotten people kind of look over here while we're doing this. So you can't pay for gas at the pump, but you're worried about what somebody else's relationship looks like. And I know that sounds harsh, but it needs to sound harsh because it's really what's happening. And all of this is word to you by my opinion, so this is my town hall, so I know I'm gonna get some emails, but this is really my answer to that, yeah.
So you mentioned the distraction of the gas sector. Clean energy, can we talk about that for a minute?
Sure.
A lot of strides made in the past couple of years, has that been protected?
Um, so the question was about, has the clean energy progress been protected? My answer is mostly. One of the things that I'm really disappointed at and that had a bipartisan support, unfortunately, was the shifting of a lot of the power to decide these different projects, whether it's pipelines or different projects, to go just with DEQ, where there was a lot more citizen check, you know, to whether or not a project should move forward or in what way for the permitting process. With that being mostly under DEQ now, I think it, I think, you know, they've shown us, you know, what they're in favor of, I'm sorry, Department of Environmental Quality, right? So the same people that brought you the Mountain Valley Pipeline, the same people that brought, you know, any of the pipelines, fracking is great, you know, like all of those sorts of decisions now have way more power than they did before because of that shift. But for the most part, the progress that we made with incentives for electric vehicles, the solar and wind projects, those were all protected. Also, shout out to the folks that were carrying those bills because there's something in there that basically says that they have to hire from Hampton Roads for the projects that are happening in Hampton Roads. So that's really cool. And so, you know, just looking at a lot of the progress we made, we were able to keep it up. So then. Okay, so questions from the internet. Have you talked about solitary confinement and?
The Grandsway Court.
Okay.
Coming under the DOJ's.
Okay, so solitary confinement, I supported getting rid of solitary confinement in all instances because I do think that it's barbaric and inhumane unless it's protecting the person because of extenuating circumstances. We are in a different day and time. So when you have a split legislature where the Democrats run the Senate and the Republicans run the House, and then you have a Republican governor, not even just stating facts, where we were working on earned sentence credits and getting people to come home or doing prison reform and making sure that people had access to all kinds of things, that community service could count against fees and fines. The other side is running on another fear-mongering tactic where basically if you've committed a crime, you are a horrible person and we should be afraid of you. And so it's really interesting that the focus on punishment as opposed to the focus on rehabilitation has taken such a strong turn with this new administration. So I don't think that we're gonna be making much progress in the right direction, and I think that anything else coming up under the Department of Justice is probably not going to get a favorable outcome for what families of the incarcerated or what incarcerated individuals are looking for. Um, okay, what's the plan to fight Governor Youngkin's 15-week ban and our Dems crafting a plan, of course? Do you think Youngkin will introduce this bill during special session? So, interesting question. Remember when we talked about special session? We are in special session now. But a governor can call us back to a special session, but the legislative branch decides what we will and will not talk about during the special session. So in the current special session, the resolution that said what we can and can't talk about right now was just conference reports, just judges, and just the budget, right? Which was one of the conference reports. And commending in memorial resolutions, which are just like, you did a great job or you lived a good life, right? So I do not think that it is coming up in this special session, whether or not he will try to call us back into another special session, is interesting. What makes this even more interesting is that one of the Democrats in the Senate has actually said that he is pro-life, but he's clarified his position to say what that means. And you'll have to go to Senator Morrissey's website because it's bounced around a little bit and I can't keep track of what he said last. But, so it's really, I'm nervous about what could or could not happen. Whether or not they'll try to pull the trigger on that before the 2023 elections, who knows? I don't know. But the fact is that everyone should be concerned. Everyone should be concerned. The fact that we're hearing statements in other parts of the country that basically say, if you get raped, you can't get pregnant because your body will just shut that thing down, or that so few rapes end up in pregnancies, sir, ma'am, if they're not being reported, you don't know what is happening, and people don't report a lot of sexual assault because of the messed-up system that we have. Also, if you're gonna make policy about anybody's biological human body, I think you should know how a human body works. And it's just, we're in dangerous times. So those are the questions that we had so far. So I know we're running out of time. I do want to make sure that you're still thinking about your questions, but I want to just finish up real quick. Like I said, we had veto session, I talked about some of the vetoes, and I can tell you about some more if you have any questions. We are in special session. That means that we went back, we voted on the budget, we voted on the conference reports, we are set to go back September 7th. We will handle, hopefully, or maybe, some of the conference reports. Remember, conference reports are compromised bills when the bills were not identical from the Senate and the House. And we also, I think there's a retiring judge coming off of the Virginia Supreme Court we need to replace and vote for a judge for that, because don't forget, we elect judges. And then hopefully that should be the end of this special session. And so for some of us, we typically end our job in April, and we're going through September, and then last year we had a long special session, so don't get tired, keep, 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 you know, staying abreast of things. But I do want to give there a chance for any other questions in the time we have remaining. Or comments, just comments, concerns.
How do we meet you? What's the best way to reach out on our issues?
Sure. So, thank you for coming. If you'll pull out your cell phones and you just hold your camera function over the QR code that's up here above my shoulder, that takes you to my link tree. It has my website, it has my contact information, and I'll keep this up. It has some news articles that I've been in, it has some speeches I've given, so that's my link tree. And then it also gives you the information. But here's also, A, you.
You dropped out of the.
Oh, sure.
You're taking that.
Sorry, no, you're fine. You can take a picture of the whole thing, but then also just the camera function, the website should show up, and then you can click on that and go to the link tree. And then if you're following at home, we can drop the link in the chat for our website, which is delegatemarciaprice.com. So you can call me, we can talk. We are able to drop legislation as of when? Everybody that was listening says July, July. We can start dropping legislation for 2023 in July. And so if you want to talk about an idea that you've had or how we can change some of those solutions into bills, we can start talking now. Now, when you call and you get Tempest and she says, we'll meet with you in August, I want to let you know why. We, ever since 2016, every summer have done a youth camp in July, and this is the first year we've been able to go back since the pandemic because we've had to have two years off. So we have 20 girls who are sophomores at an achievable dream that we will have for two weeks, and so July is already booked. If it's an emergency, of course, we can work you in. But we're gonna pick back up with our office hours. No, let me really be serious. If you have a constituent service concern, please reach out to us. But if you want to chat about January, we're gonna start doing that in August. Let me, again, make that very clear. If you have a constituent concern that you need handled immediately, please still call us. But if you're setting up a meeting to talk about policy for eventually, then that's what we'll be doing in August. Did you have any other questions? Sure.
Can I ask another one?
There's no limit to questions.
A while ago, there was a blurb on NPR where you talked about a police surveillance bill, about using security cameras on the corner.
Yeah.
And you spoke against it, and I just want to ask, what happened to that bill? Did it pass?
Sure, okay. So there's a question about the facial recognition technology bill. Last year, then Delegate LaCheris aired, got a bill passed that basically said facial recognition technology could not be used by anyone other than the state police. This year, and just to let you know, the state police did, I think over the last two years, I think there were maybe like 100, I'll get that exact number, but it was very few. This year, a bipartisan group said, oh my gosh, we've got to keep the state police in check and pass this bill. So this is when you learn to read the bill. The bill not only expanded the ways that the state police could use facial recognition technology, it also expanded it to local police and college campuses. So when I said, okay, well, let me see, because on the national level, facial recognition technology was being used by the IRS, and there were so many errors that Congress shut it down because people's money was getting messed up because facial recognition technology had so many errors. Secondly, the errors disproportionately impact Black and Asian people. And there's this, you know, concern that this isn't about whether or not we can open your computer, this isn't about whether or not you're conveniently opening your phone, this is about whether or not in a court case, facial recognition technology could be used to take your rights away, right? So imagine my surprise when I get there and like, nobody's screaming out about this thing, and it looks like it's about to sail through, and I'm like, nope, okay, I don't know everything about this, but I know this sounds bad. And I look over to my Republican brothers and sisters and I say, libertarians, where are you? This sounds like something you would hate. And it was the funniest moment, if it wasn't so serious. It was the funniest moment because I think he would understand when I say this, but my exact opposite is Nick Freitas, and he's a delegate out of, uh, huh, yeah, it's like Fredericksburg area?
Culpeper.
Culpeper. So, quick story, my mom watches every single day a session, and it is amazing, she knows more about this stuff than I do. So he's from Culpeper. He stands up, and it's hilarious, he's like, I don't think I've ever said this, but I agree with Delegate Price. And, you know, we kind of, you know, Delegate Wampeler spoke out, I think Delegate Russell, Delegate Tran had all of the numbers and just really ran through. And so here's the importance of, even if you think you're gonna lose, why it's important to speak up. That bill had enough votes until we tinkered, until we spoke up. The bill failed on the House floor, they did a procedural move to take it back up and pass it by, and pass it by, and pass it by. And what was happening was lobbyists and delegates and senators were getting together to make the bill better because of the concerns that we had raised. Now, I don't think you would have gotten to any form of the bill that I would have supported, but it did make the bill better because of the things that we were doing. So they made the bill, I will say, it was better, I did not support it, but it was better, and kind of got rid of the big surveillance aspect that you would need in order to really, like, you would really need massive surveillance in order for us to do what those technology companies are looking to do. But Microsoft, Facebook, like, all of these people are saying, no, thank you, and we're not gonna sell our stuff to the law enforcement, but here Virginia is saying, yep, come on, let's do it. So it's still weird, but eventually the bill was tinkered with one more time with the governor's amendment, and it did pass. Okay, what are my plans for preparing our community to vote at record numbers in November 2022? So I had mentioned that day job, I work on voter engagement every day, not even for my district, but just making sure people are registered to vote. So here's my thing, right? It's super easy for me just to say, everybody should vote. It really isn't that easy when you think about it, right? Some of the changes are new, not everybody knows exactly how easy it is. Like, you can even still get a free ID if you need one in order to vote. So I have to help educate you all in order to then go educate your circles as to why it's important to vote, but also how easy it is to vote. One of the main mistakes that I think people make is trying to shame younger generations into voting because they have a sense of, you have a sense of obligation where they may not. It is because we dropped the ball in passing one that sense of obligation. It is also because I give credit to Gen Z, the younger millennials, they want a reason before they make an action. I think that is admirable because some people are blind sheep and just do whatever, right? So then that means we give them the reason. And so one of the tactics that I like to use when I'm having a conversation with someone that's younger or just doesn't believe that voting matters, one, I bring up the case about Delegate Simons, who literally lost the election because her name was pulled out of a bowl. A, I carried the bill that got rid of that, we will never be pulling names out of bowls to decide elections because we passed my bill on that. But literally how important every single vote is. The other thing is, I ask them, what matters to you most? And like, really think about that. If somebody walked up to you and said, what matters to you most, what would your answer be? And then I have prepared myself such that whatever their answer is, I can tie it to government and how government is in every single decision we make on a daily basis. So I had some kids tell me, I just want to be able to get a good job and take care of my family. I just went over that tax policy. I showed you how tax policy, so I'm like, you want more of your bag? It's important that you vote for people that believe in, you know, fair tax structures. You know, somebody was telling me that they just want to be able to take care of people who were victims of sexual assault. Like, there were these girls that wanted to grow up to be lawyers, because they saw an injustice that did not get fixed in order to fix it. Most inspiring story ever, right? They want to grow up in order to change the criminal justice system. What is the criminal justice system? A series of policies, right? And policy decisions. So I'm like, guess what? Whether it's judge, whether it's the person, you know, in the executive branch that's running the state police or the jails, or whether it's the laws that we're creating, every single thing impacts that. So that's just my way of having these conversations. The other thing is, I feel like, whether you agree with me or not, I think you have to respect my grind. I want to give you a reason why you should vote for me or vote to participate in the system, because I'm not sitting on my butt, like, I'm just, you know, I'm trying to do things and creating an alternative vision of what people have come to believe politicians really are. And so that's kind of how I'm handling that. But I appreciate the conversation, because it reminds me there's one more thing that I wanted to say about that. If you live in Newport News, you got a card that told you what districts you live in. And if you lived in the 95th, you may have gotten a card that said that your district changed to the 85th. I want to explain. When I ran in 2021 and won, I ran for the 95th district, and I will represent that district until the term is over. Redistricting went into place this year, you know, basically for the new congressional districts. At the next election cycle for the House, what was previously District 85 will be now District 95, will be now District 85. So I am not the District 85 yet. That is for the next election cycle. So when I said, welcome to the 95th district, it is still the 95th. So that card is for the next election for that position. That make sense? Any questions on that? Okay, perfect. So I think, you know, we have time for one more question. And then also understanding that you can send any of your questions to Delegate Price. We are going to send out to everyone that registered, whether they were able to make it or not. We're gonna send a link to a recording of this, so I know I went over a lot of information. We're also gonna send you the links that help you look up some of the things. And then I love to have conversations. If you're like, I just can't find who voted for what or whatever, we can help you navigate the system. And then again, in August is when we'll start those meetings to discuss bills for next session. Any other questions? Yes, so in the card that you got in the mail, if you live in Newport News, it lists your congressional district. That is now your new congressional district for the elections that are happening this year. So all of Newport News, all of Hampton are in the third congressional district now, instead of it being parts in one or the other. Yes. Yeah, so what would I change about the tax code to make it more equitable? A, so we did one other thing. In addition to the rebates, in addition to the earned income tax credit, we also doubled the standard deduction, which is gonna be helpful to some of you all, right? But if we had just done the rebates and the doubling of the standard deduction, 1 million Virginians would have still been left out. So that is why the EITC partially refundability was really important and why that graph was important. So those were things that we could do to kind of make it a little bit better. But that chart that I showed you, where the top 1% pays a smaller percentage of their income in taxes than the bottom 20%, I would flip that. I would have ultra wealthy people who make $400,000 or more pay their fair share, and I would get rid of a lot of the tax credits that they're getting. They said that if every single billionaire that exists in America today paid their fair share in taxes, they would still be billionaires. So let's make them pay. And when you have people like Warren Buffett saying, yeah, make me pay taxes. I would love to pay taxes. Let's make that happen. And so even if, you know, there has to be some obvious, you know, movement on the federal level, but I really do think that there should be a more shared equitable caring of the cost of all of these wonderful things that we've talked about. The other thing that I would say is, there's a lot of tax incentives that people claim are to bring businesses to the area. There are some that actually work. But when you look at Jeff Bezos, I don't think he needs any more money, personally. I think he has a lot, I think he's fine. He's like, wasn't he trying to go up to space with the other guy? So when you think about, we're giving Amazon your tax dollars. We're giving it away, but you're hurting at the pump. You're making decisions about whether or not you're buying formula or, you know, medicine or paying rent. You now have less time to pay rent before an eviction. That is what I would help equalize. And I'm not necessarily a socialist. I'm literally talking about capitalism with fairness, if such an animal exists. So that's what I would work on. Awesome, so I think we've hit time. I really appreciate you all coming. We're gonna have another one of these in September, after the last hopeful meeting of a special session. And then we'll also be talking about some of the things that we can do together. I'll help you learn, again, how to follow things through session, and we'll really get ready for the next thing. I want to thank Tempest, I want to thank the holiday aunt, I want to thank my mom. She's always there. And please, 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 reach out. And then we'll give us to the 5th, and we'll get that follow-up email to you with the links and services. Awesome, thank you all, have a great night. Thank you all for participating, have a great night.